Okay, we're gonna go a little bit out of order here because what we need to do first, instead of going over our minutes, we're gonna start with our public hearing first. So we have an application for rezone at zero Gordon Han Road, Lafette, Georgia. Tax partial zero dash three one five dash one dash zero zero one requesting to rezone this property from A one agriculture to R two residential for the purpose of dividing the property. Is there anyone here that wants to speak in opposition of this zoning request? Any opposition on the zone? This is the second public hearing on this. There was a public hearing at the Planning and Zoning Commission. We have our chairman here, Mr. Cantrell. Could you speak to this issue and what the recommendation is of the Planning and Zoning Board?
Planning, Planning Board does recommend that we rezon it. It's a kind of a area that would be good for development and it is in proximity with a R two or R one, I believe, R one zoning. And so we do recommend that it be, go to R one.
Okay. So those recommendations that it goes to R one originally was set up for an R two. But we are looking to go to R one, is that what I'm hearing? Is that, is that the property here with us?
Well, one of these executives that stayed.
Okay. Yes, so we'd like to hear from you as well. Have you got anything you want to add or something?
No, sir, sure don't.
Okay. So the original request was to go from A one to R two. And then it's the recommendation of the Planning Board that it go to R one. Is that satisfactory with the property owners?
Yeah, that was, that was just kind of a communication breakdown, we should say.
Okay.
When we made our application, we thought that joint property was R two. As it turned out, we read your map wrong and it was R one. So had it been, had we known that, we'd apply R one instead of R two.
Okay.
It was, it was a two that had been kind of corrected as a one, but it was, I pulled the minutes from the reason and it was R one.
Okay.
We're good, we're good with R one.
Perfect, okay. Well, hearing, no opposition in the planning's recommendation and the desire of the property owner, I have no problem in approving this zoning change to an R one. So we'll, let's see here. We're gonna jump back over to our minutes and we'll adjourn our public hearing there, go back into our regular scheduled meeting and go over the minutes of our meeting from February the eighth of two thousand eighteen. You should have a copy of those in your pack. Does anyone see any corrections or changes or anything before we take these into the Hearing, no corrections or changes on that, we'll go ahead and approve these minutes into our record, put these in our minute book. Lot of paperwork here on our zoning. Okay. Okay, before we go into our second item there on our agenda for resolution, I do have a letter here dated February twenty first, two thousand eighteen, addressed, subject, Planning Commission. This is addressed to Shannon Whitfield, Walker County SOU Commissioner. It says, Commissioner Whitfield, I need to resign my position of Walker County Planning Commission effective immediately. I appreciate the opportunity and look forward to serving the county in the future. Signed by Robert L. Foster. So we're going to put this into the record and accept Mr. Robert Foster's resignation from the Planning Board. With that, on our agenda, we have a resolution to appoint a new member to the Planning Commission so we don't have any delays in filling that position. So I have a resolution here, R dash zero zero three dash eighteen. Resolution appointing Scott McNabb as a member of the Walker County Planning Commission. Whereas the SOU Commissioner of Walker County is the county governing authority of Walker County, Georgia. And whereas his previous, previous ordinances of Walker County, the Commissioner appoints the members to the Walker County Planning Commission for a four-year term with Walker County Code of Ordinance thirty-four dash thirty-two. And whereas a vacancy exists due to resignation of Bob Foster, excuse me, Robert Foster and the Walker County Planning Commission for the term which he, which has or will expire on December thirty-first, two thousand nineteen. And whereas is duly of the Commissioner to appoint members for vacancies on the Walker County Planning Commission. Whereas Scott McNabb is duly qualified to serve as a member of the Walker County Planning Commission and is agreeable to serve the people of Walker County in such capacity. Now therefore be it resolved by SOU Commissioner of Walker County, Georgia, that the following named individual is hereby appointed, approved and appointed to the Walker County Planning Commission under such conditions are set forth by law and for the terms set forth below. Name being Scott McNabb. The remaining term, beginning on February the twenty-second, two thousand eighteen, expires on December thirty-first, two thousand nineteen. SO resolved and adopted this the twenty-second day of February, two thousand eighteen. So we're gonna move forward with this unless Scott's changed his mind. You didn't change your mind or backed out on me, have you?
No, sir.
Okay, all right. So we'll go ahead and put this into our record. We appreciate you stepping forward and serving your county and appreciate you taking this position. All righty. The next resolution we have here is R dash zero zero four dash eighteen. Resolution to the Georgia Assembly to authorize a hotel motel tax in Walker County. This one's a little bit longer here, so bear with me. Resolution R dash zero zero four dash eighteen. Resolution requesting the Georgia General Assembly to adopt local legislation for Walker County, Georgia to collect a hotel motel excise tax under OCGA forty-eight dash thirteen dash fifty-one B. Specifically, the tax rate and allocation of proceeds derived from the accommodation tax providing an effective date of this resolution and for other such purposes. Whereas SOU Commissioner of Walker County, the county governing authority for Walker County, Georgia, whereas OCGA forty-eight dash thirteen dash fifty-one B authorizes county governing authorities to lever an excise tax on revenues derived from the furnishing of accommodations and established procedures, conditions and limitations for the same. And whereas Walker County desires to establish an excise tax on revenue derived from furnishing for values of public, of rooms, lodging or accommodation by any person or legal entity, accommodation tax. Whereas OCGA forty-eight thirteen fifty-one B four requires that a local act be enacted by the General Assembly prior to imposing a collection of the occupation, accommodation tax. And whereas OCGA forty-eight thirteen fifty-one B four further requires that the county governing authorities specify the subsequent tax rate to be collected, identify the projects of tourism product development purposes to be funded, specifically the allocation of the proceeds. Now therefore be it resolved that the Walker County hereby requires a legislative delegation of Walker County, Georgia to sponsor and introduce a local legislative act before the General Assembly authorizing Walker County to adopt a hotel motel excise tax of up to eight percent is authorized pursuant to OCGA forty-eight thirteen dash fifty-one B within the tax district comprised of the unincorporated area of Walker County is authorized by OCGA forty-eight dash thirteen dash fifty dash one. Be it further resolved that pursuant to OCGA forty-eight thirteen fifty-one B five A, an amount equal to not less than fifty percent of the total amount of taxes collected that exceed the amount of the taxes that would be collected at the rate of five percent shall be expended for tourism, convention and trade show by destination marketing organization or through contracts with any entity other than the destination marketing organization as defined by OCGA forty-eight thirteen fifty point two one for the planning, conducting of participants in programs of information and publicly designate to attract or advertise tourism, convention or trade shows. And be it resolved that pursuant to OCGA forty-eight thirteen fifty-one B five B, the remaining amount of tax collected that exceeds the amount of tax that would be collected at the rate of five percent, which are not otherwise expended under OCGA forty-eight thirteen fifty-one B five A, shall be expended for tourism product development as defined by OCGA forty-eight thirteen fifty-two six for the creation or the expansion of physical attractions which are available and open to the public, including but not limited to the expenditures of funds improvement of Walker County destination appeals to visitors and supporting visitor experiences in Walker County, providing educational opportunities for citizens to support and promote historic preservation of the arts and supporting business and economic development to sustain existing jobs and to promote the creation of new jobs in Walker County. Or if no tourism product development project exists, shall be expended for tourism, convention and trade shows by a destination marketing organization or through contracts with an entity other than the destination marketing organization as defined by OCGA forty-eight thirteen fifty-two one. And be further resolved that pursuant to OCGA forty-eight thirteen fifty-one B two, an amount equal to three percent of the tax rate imposed shall be expended by Walker County for non-restricted purposes. And it be further resolved that any and all resolutions or any part therefore in conflict with this resolution are hereby repealed. This resolution shall be effective on the adoption. SO resolved and adopted the twenty-second day of February, twenty eighteen. Give you a little background, I know that's pretty wordy, so that's the legal talk that the attorneys put in. But we have a, a large tourism hotel motel convention center that's coming to Walker County up on Lookout Mountain that is the, formerly known as the Canyon Ridge Project. They've changing the name to that project, are gonna refer to that as the McLemore in conjunctions with the McLemore Cove because when you're on top of the mountain, you're overlooking the McLemore Cove area. So they're changing that name as they move forward. They will start construction up there April of this year, starting with the renovations and upgrades to the golf course. They're spending a couple million dollars on renovations and upgrades for the golf course. They are moving the eighteenth hole in green off of the brow, moving it to a lower brow so they can put a new, very large clubhouse that will host a, an eatery inside that venue that will overlook the bluff. So they're gonna start both of those in two thousand eighteen as phase one of their project. So they also will be making an announcement very soon of their partnership with their hotel alliance that they've done and also give more information about their start date. Very, very few counties or cities across the state that does not impose a hotel motel tax. The city of Chickamauga has one, the city of Lafette has one. So this is for the unincorporated areas of our county. And this funding will be divided up, there's very strict guidelines for this that we were reading through all of that, that dictates where that funding goes and how it is spent. But it's a great opportunity to increase the revenue of taxes in our community without putting the burden on the property tax owners and gives us other revenue sources by people that are visiting into our area to help pay for what they're coming to visit and take care of our local government. So most everywhere you travel to is a destination, if you look on your hotel bill, you're gonna see a line item that has some reference to a local hotel motel excise tax. So this is just getting us up into the twenty-first century and putting something on the books that we'll be able to collect this. Also another example, our cabin rentals and the house rental down at Mountain Cove Farms will also be able to start collecting this tax on that right away once the legislative act and all is passed. So it's a great opportunity for Walker County to have another means of income generated through this tax that's basically only going to affect anyone that is coming to stay overnight. So this is not a tax on the local citizens, this is a tax on people visiting our community. So any questions? Yes, sir?
Yes, you mentioned historical things. Will it also include the history like down here in Lafette and stuff so projects can be done at the Marsh House to increase traffic here in Lafette?
Yeah, it's very possible as, that that could be done because the county actually owns the Marsh House. So it would have to be things that was, are in the unincorporated area or things that the, that the county actually owns. So we wouldn't be able to do anything outside the ownership in the city areas other than what the, the county has.
But the Buckland Center is part of the county family.
That is true too, that is what.
And all during the week because when we have an event here, it needs to be promoted weeks in advance by getting the tourists to come in and know that we are open for business. That Buckland Center sits in here and people drive up, they get frustrated because they can't be here too much, they drive off. Something needs to be done to promote the history here.
Absolutely.
Because that building that just collapsed was the original store that started with that.
That's right. Good points. Any other questions, comments? Okay, hearing done, we'll go ahead and sign this into the record and approve this resolution. Our clerk will attest to that signature. Okay, one of the exciting things we have is item number four on our agenda is we've been successful this year in receiving a grant from the Association of County Commissioners and this will pay for us to have a intern to come and work with Joe Leggie and our public relations. And so this will pay an intern up to two, two hundred hours. It will cover ten dollar an hour wage that they'll be paid. It will pay the matching social security Medicare taxes that have to be paid and it will also pay the workers comp coverage for that intern. So we were successful last year in getting an internship to work in our public relations. The Association takes this very serious, they're very proud of this program. Out of a hundred and fifty-nine counties, they only issue about thirty scholarships per year. So it's a pretty competitive process and you have to fill out an application and do a write-up of what your goals and objectives are and what this intern will be doing. So it's not just a fluff type position or feel-good position, this is something that they want to see results by an intern coming in and assisting and helping your county to achieve goals. So we had to outline in that document the goals that we're setting out and this person will be, again, working with Joe and our public relations to start doing some video work that we want to do to put more information out about the positive things of Walker County, some of our local attractions and also some of the things about how county government works. A lot of times people get confused of how the different offices function and how county government all is put together. So this will allow us to have a, a young intern, someone that's a college student, to be able to come in here. Preferably, we like to find somebody that has a desire to go into public relations or media or video or different things like that. So we're hoping we'll be successful in finding a candidate that will have a high level of interest in pursuing that as a career in some capacity. So I'm not gonna bore you with all of the details of the agreement that we have, but we wanted to bring this public and make this document available of the contract agreement that we're entering into with the Association of accepting this grant. Again, they were very impressed with our results last year and was very enthused about our plan for this year. So they have awarded us a grant two years in a row, which is very unusual. So we're very tickled with this. Any questions or comments on this?
We're going to have the intern, will he, they help them promote the area?
Yes, we're gonna feature all the attractions and events and things to come to and put up several videos together to talk about Walker County.
Because the ones y'all have, like the one on the Great Buckland Motel case and how that played a part in it was very informative, I found it on Facebook. And it gave me a picture of the Gory House so I knew what the Gory House looked like.
Very good. Yeah, so this is, this is a great thing for Walker County to be able to accept this internship Last year, I mean, they actually sent a staff member out here to do an update and actually interview the progress of the intern and get their input. So it's a, it's a very structured program and we're very excited to accept that again. Next item on our agenda is a request for proposal for the hauling and disposal of construction and demolition waste from our county landfill. So this is just, again, information, this has been sent out, it's also been advertised in a local messenger. Won't go and bore you with all the details, but just to summarize, we're in a situation where our C and D landfill is almost full. And so we are in the process of working through the permitting and conditions and all that EPD lays out for an expansion project. So we have property next door that we are about halfway through the approval process of expanding the C and D landfill. And preliminary reports are showing that they could probably extend the life of our C and D landfill up to about twenty years is what the preliminary numbers were showing us. So we have an engineering firm that's been engaged with us, we work closely with EPD to make sure we're following all their regulations and guidelines. But we're very concerned that our C and D site may potentially become full before we get all of our permitting and all in place. So this is a precautionary action that we can start diverting of our waste off-site. We currently divert our municipal solid waste, we transfer that out, they've been doing that for about twenty years because we don't have a subtitled D landfill for municipal waste, we have a C and D landfill for construction demolition waste. So this is us being proactive and we hope in the near future to not have to be transferring that out, but to expand our landfill and be able to move that forward. So we wanted to get this out to the public and make people aware that's in this business. And we have a fairly tight timeline on this. Proposals are due in no later than March twenty-first, two thousand eighteen. Proposal received after that date and time will be considered late and non-responsive. Proposals will be opened at twelve fifteen on March twenty-first, two thousand eighteen. So we will have a special call meeting on March the twenty-first. At least one item on that agenda will be the opening of those bids to make that information known publicly. We anticipate the awarding of the contract during the Commissioner's regular scheduled meeting the next day, which would be March twenty-second of two thousand eighteen at six P M. So that gives us about a half a day to look at that information, digest it and we very possibly could have that on the agenda to possibly award a contract on the twenty-second of March. So mark that on your calendar for a special call meeting around noon on March the twenty-first. Any questions or comments on this request for proposal?
How long do we sustain our landfill on construction materials if we enforce a code where they had to separate their debris before it went to the landfill so that we could recycle?
I don't know the answer to that. I don't know. We're in a situation now where the time's approaching us, you know, very quickly on this and so we've gotta move forward and get this in place. But it would be great to have more of a structured recycling program at the landfill. We do some recycling there now, but it would be nice to eventually have a, you know, broader communication and get people engaged.
About structured recycling at the point of the debris being put into the landfill where the dumpsters are there, have different dumpsters for different debris at the construction site so that it can be all pieced separately and separated quickly?
Yeah, that's a great idea. We, something we need to spend more time on and work on. Okay, that adjourns our regular scheduled meeting and at this time we'll open up the floor to any questions, comments? Yes, sir?
Where's the county and the clinic up on McFarlane? Where's that at right now?
We got notification yesterday that Primary Healthcare has entered into an agreement with the Walker County school system where they're going to, they've entered into a lease agreement to use the Fairview Elementary School on a one-year initial agreement. So their, their notice on the building here on the corner at Duke Street and also the facility up in Rossville, they're, the current standing is, is for them to vacate both of those properties by the end of March. And they have entered into that lease agreement with the school to be able to do that because their lease agreement for it starts March the first. So from the beginning, when I met with them, I said, you know, they need to do what's best for their company and for their patients. So if, if they feel like that that's what's best for them, we, we totally support that. No hard feelings on, on this administration and we wish them the best and know that they provided, you know, a very good service to citizens in this entire region. So they, they do have a good operation.
Do you know what you're gonna do with that building when they leave?
We've got some options that, that we've been looking at for some time. So we're gonna do something there that'd be very productive for the citizens. So we, stay tuned and we should have some announcements forthcoming.
Have you talked to the DCA about what would happen if that, if that building is empty for three months? Or are you guys allowed to just have it empty for a while or what happens with that?
We, we have been in, in communication with the department through the, through the DCA. They've been very supportive, they truly, fully understand that the lease agreement with Primary Healthcare was directly with the county and with Primary Healthcare. And so Primary Healthcare had no commitment to DCA, the commitment was off with Walker County and DCA. So they understand we're in a transition, they've been very supportive and provided great information. And as long as we use it for, for community and investing in our citizens, they, they said there's a ton of options that we've got to utilize that facility for the betterment of our citizens.
Have they given you a timeframe for when you would need to have something, some other offer there, some other thing?
We haven't had that discussion, we just found out yesterday, Primary Healthcare's final decision, so we haven't had a chance to talk to DCA to communicate that to them. But we've kept them abreast, I've had three or four phone calls with them and some emails, you know, having dialogue and so they've been very engaged, very supportive and I think as long as we're moving forward, they're gonna continue to be supportive with us.
On that hotel motel tax, it says you guys can tax up to eight percent. Is that, do you guys plan to tax the full eight percent?
Yes, full eight percent.
And so on that, five percent has to be designated for tourism?
Yes.
And then three percent, is that just, can go to your general fund?
It can, yes.
Okay. And on the tourism stuff, do you guys, like, is it like SLOS where you have to provide a list of things that you would do with that money or is it just that that has to be your part?
Well, there's, there's full disclosure and there's annual reporting that has to go to the Department of Community Affairs. So once we know for sure that we've got that passed through the General Assembly and signed off by the governor, by the governor, then we'll be able to formalize our plan and put out more information moving forward. So the resolution and the advertising all has to be done to be in compliance with the law for the General Assembly to introduce that. So Senator Mullis is working with us on that at the General Assembly. So this is a very, very common procedure. Like I say, there's several hundred cities and counties across the state of Georgia that does this, so it's just more of a procedural thing that we have to work through to get that implemented.
And I'm sorry, you were saying, assuming, and obviously this probably will go through the right process if you pass, but once it's passed, you have to, you're saying you have to release a report on what you do with a hotel motel tax?
There has to be a, a plan put together, there also has to be annual reporting of how those funds, how much funds come in, where those funds went, so there's full disclosure.
Who do you report that to? Is that just on the audit or is that?
It, I'm sure there'd be some information on the audit, but primarily the reporting goes to Department of Community Affairs. It's a very structured program.
And it's standard, I assume Jeff has said, yeah, I'll, I'll, there's no problem and we'll, we'll pass it through?
Yes.
Okay. And besides Mountain Cove Farms, is there any other current hotels in the area? And besides Mountain Cove Farms, is there any other current hotels in the unincorporated area that would be affected by this?
There are a few places that do rentals, like that's on Verbo and some of the other type sites. They would also, anyone that does for business, for profit, overnight rentals for a fee would be subject to this. And so, there are a few of those across our county where they do rentals.
Would that be like an Airbnb or?
Yeah, it'd be someone that's like listed on that, or you've got some bed and breakfasts and things. So, there's just a handful of them, but it would apply. And it would definitely apply to the seven cabins and the house that we rent out at Mountain Cove Farms.
And then, this is sort of the transition, but I know that obviously you're on the Regional Commission and there's been sort of a rural broadband kind of committee within that commission?
That's correct.
Have you been involved with that?
Yes, I was appointed and asked to serve on that commission. So, we are working with the state, working through the Regional Commission, through the legislative body, trying to bring attention to the need for broadband internet access in our rural communities. We have some areas in Walker County that doesn't even have cell service. And so, this is to bring more attention to that. Our Association of County Commissioners made broadband in rural Georgia the number one priority as our legislative issues for this General Assembly. So, this is moving forward, there's actually a hearing at the Capitol on this on March the first at ten thirty, I believe. Let me verify that for you. If you, something, if you wanted to attend, it's an open meeting at the Capitol. Senator Gooch has introduced one bill already and he's going to be speaking to the group on that particular topic.
Who provides broadband in Walker?
On the north end of the county, we have EPB that provides their gig service in the Rossville and the Flintstone area, Lookout Mountain. Comcast provides a lot of the center of the county, along with Chickamauga Telephone, offers internet service. Also, you've got Parker Fiber Net that provides some fiber services to businesses and government offices. All three of our public libraries are connected through that service as well. And then, you have Windstream provides service on the south end of the county. There may be some others, those are just the ones I know right off. So, there are several providers. And, you know, we're hoping that the state will give incentives to those providers and possible grants. So, different things to try to promote and help grow that out. Because your school systems, it affects them when you send schoolchildren home with laptops, iPads, and they need to have access to the internet. You have, it's important for economic development, it's important for business. People working home businesses or people that need home access on the weekends for their business. So, there's a lot of reasons that are very positive to have the state of Georgia completely covered with broadband access. And so, there's new technologies out, there's some wireless things that are coming on board. Five G is being built out in some of the metro areas, so it's a real exciting time.
From your work on the commission, what's your understanding of what are the key incentives that could actually make it economically feasible to kind of build that infrastructure out in some of these communities where you might only have ten people or so?
There's, the infrastructure is the main thing of getting the infrastructure in place. And so, some of those rural areas where they can target areas, like you say, may only be ten houses and you may go for miles and there's not any more houses. So, they can actually put wireless cell type systems in to cover those areas. And so, it's hard for a provider to be able to make that profitable with an infrastructure cost. And so, we're hoping that the state will provide grant opportunities to reach out to these providers to incentivize them or to cover the cost of the infrastructure. And then, also, some of these bills talk a lot about right-of-way access. And some of your more busier places, they're looking at possibly, anything goes underground, maybe a dig-ones policy where you implement ordinances where providers are sharing in that space, so you don't have multiple vendors coming in and digging trenches over and over and over. So, trying to have more of a shared collaboration. You see a lot of cell towers, you'll have one tower and there'll be three or four providers on there. And so, that's pretty common in the industry to try to get the cost down. So, right-of-way is infrastructure cost and bringing attention to those needs. Good points.
And one thing I wanna comment on is we need stronger enforcement by the county at the Marsh House, the crosswalk there. I was nearly hit last Thursday morning by a passerby who did not observe the crosswalk. And I had to back across the street with my wheelchair. And that person was in the wrong and they think they on the road and it has to stop. If you complain to them, they say it's a state road that y'all?
It is a state road, so the State Patrol as well as the city collaborate on that road. But the county police or the Sheriff's Department wouldn't have direct jurisdiction on those state roads.
Somebody needs to call the city and have them start enforcing and protect the services.
Okay, alright, what else? Alright, well, I appreciate y'all coming out and participating in our meeting tonight and look forward to seeing you at our next meeting in a couple of weeks. And y'all have a safe travel home. Thank you.